Back to the C, we're going to get started with the workshop portion of the meeting. Thank you. Now it's going to be right back to our screen.
So good evening there, Uncle. The first item on the agenda for the workshop meeting is going to be the Edna Hill's Phase 3 presentation discussion on the concept plan and secondary access alternatives. Jessica on the phone is going to present on what they had met with the residents in the Edna Hill subdivision, but she wanted to go to the podium and she was going to have to reschedule that meeting. She had a feeling that would be so. If you have any questions, I can answer it. Or if somebody from the subdivision that was at that meeting wants to talk about a little bit or what else was trying to voice, that's fine. If you come up to the mic, please.
April now, solid on Edna. I actually have a point to get to today. Please go briefly speaking like the city want to know, we don't want access in CR 300 for the work. And that's. We did a relook on that Saturday. We were there for about two and a half hours, not with the girl. There's some light news that we get completed. We do not want. I'm still appalled. The last thing we're going to try to push free a connection from CR 300 over to April. You know, we need to think about that subdivision. Those roads are narrow. What do you think coming to take away our land on the front of our houses in the industry wider? But that's going to be turned around over there. She talks a lot at the corner of my cul-de-sac. We do not want the school traffic coming through our neighborhood. We don't want those other subdivision coming through our neighborhood. It's a quiet place, but it's lots of ability to keep walking their dogs. We don't want. And if y'all go ahead and keep on worrying that stuff that we don't approve of, then I'll put my name and I'll put my noise to back people running an issue at the next city council board chair. I don't know what else to say. She made me murder Shan. Y'all are talking about all this fight back and you're talking about intervention fund and all of this subdivision. And it's crazy. Number one, the developers, they want that plan. They should have already been complaining on where they were going to get an access to 300, not to our. I can't help it that Mrs. Wacheté says they want to sell her van. She doesn't want to come to be here either. That's they're talking about what proposed for those home, maybe five homes. Multiply that by two people. How many cars is that? And that's the thing, they don't have any teenagers that drive. When you're going to let them come to the average street, go around the corner and then go out, I feel to 21. It's our only entrance and exit. What part of that do you not understand? I just do not knock that. The limitations of the number of feet.
A year ago, we told you that. That you were that we needed another activity of the now. And we mentioned about a crash. At the meeting, it's a tactic to get the other option. Because we understand the water flow being on the line. These are invested in property and land where you guys want him to open up to the turnaround. It's not for, I thought that is not for Edna's subdivision residents, it's for City Caldwell to have more access for teachers, the students, the houses from Arrowhead to come to this. Because that street was never widened. It wasn't made for the amount of people and houses you were going to have there. So we're the one that's paying the cost. If we have a crash date for emergency that the city says we need, just like we got habit at the country club on North Street. Because you don't want people from North Street coming to the country club. We don't want the people coming from the school, the teachers, the students, games, before games, after games. We don't want them coming over there. So we're thinking a crash gate for emergency only to be put up there. Number one, number two, when we bought here, there was a going to be other homes built. The builders were going to build and it was supposed to be a street behind Edna. The builders decided to stop building. Yes, we never came through. But now they put a block on it. When the developer blocked the land, they didn't want to sell that block. So they blocked it. But yet they got approved originally with that street on there for another exit. I don't think it's fair that the city allowed that it was designed one way. And now they don't want to sell the land and they block that. And we have to have an opening from, we have a country road, we have a river, whatever it's called, we have to come through our property in our street. Because they will be coming onto our properties on one corner, on April Street. I have signs in front. They don't believe how many people come onto the property, on my property, to use it as a turnaround. We're talking residents and we're talking to other people. They don't want to go all the way to the end and turn around. They use my property. It almost sounds. So what I'm trying to say, I think the best way that everybody could be happy is we have a crash date for emergency on the phone. Plus, if it's for emergencies, we could get out of there. We could go to church. They can come into church if it's an emergency. So probably that's what we need there. We don't need a road, big road behind Edna to get out if it's an emergency. I have to say thank you.
Anyone else on the panel?
Good morning. My name is Lloyd Mansell. And I was at that meeting with the residents. And we were going to present here too. But it's just going to be just very, we still convert in. But since that time, there've been a lot of brainstorming going on about the access. That's been the biggest focus of attention. And I believe that with some cooperation and creativity, there are solutions. There are nothing overly burdened by developer for additional costs. It's not going to force the neighborhood to be accepting through traffic. That's human nature. It will happen. If there was an opening there now, we would have traffic from 300. And the original plan for Edna Hill, the expansion of it, is something different than what we're seeing now. And there may be some options that direction. But even with the current plan and access to 300, there's no reason why the streets need to be connected to the existing Edna Hill development. The street is lined through the three of them that are parallel and see connections. The drainage that would need to continue southward can be accommodated through extending them. What she mentioned, the crash gate. There can be streets that correspond with the existing streets. Then connecting them and extending them into the phases to the tour that the developer wishes to do. That would also accommodate their connecting to existing sewers and going to a little station that's in the south, the east corner. There also are water lines that need to be connected. So we've considered all of these things and we think we can come to an agreement. What we're doing is a betrayal that there is a three turn attendant. This is the way we're wanting to do it. We want to have this other connection to 300. And we don't care. It's what we're committed. The city part of it, the developer has spoken to us and their spokesperson doesn't have told us they're willing to work with. And as I said at the outset, we're not expecting the developer to spend exorbitant amounts of money beyond what they need to do for the city plan. There are ways to make this work. And we're just asking that the city give us that acting and that reasonable accommodation for coming to a networkable solution that works for them. That the future of the development will have its safe access. It will have circulation traffic wise for both the existing subdivision and what connects to it later to the west of both of the development. That will be developed similar to how it was planned and didn't happen. That's inevitable. So what's the rush? As I stated, they seem very open to a reasonable and cost effective alternative to what seems to be being pushed. Let me ask this question. If there's no push by the city, why was there a meeting that happened that most of the residents were not at, were not notified, could not reasonably expect the meeting expected to be, and it's happened to be here and you got caught in? I think you alluded to one of the issues that is still a moment of contention. And that is to access it. The two accesses, as I understand it, is four developments that are over 50 lots.
A total of lots.
Total lots of developments. So that is a push on this developer. The city saying, if you are going to continue on the phases of Edna Hill, you're going to call it Edna Hill, it's going to be an extension of the existing Edna Hill. It is guaranteed that it's going to go over the 50 lots.
Correct. And that's not a push from the city. That's a regulation that's been in place since 2002 when the subdivision ordinance was adopted. And the actual building code states that only 30 homes would be allowed with one ingress and press. So it's actually allowing for an additional 20 homes to be allowed within that segment.
The proposed connections in the current proposal, extending the streets into phases three and four would allow for what's shown as a cul-de-sac. And then William Thomas has a stub that would go into the property to the west. That that property is Mr. Howell's property. Those would be the additional access points which would then connect out the 21 presumably going north from there and west of the existing Edna. As far as the 40 some, I don't remember totally compared with. The existing Edna Hill is 40 some. I am not touching the power. If we're able to work with this developer and with the development, the existing already planted, already three five homes for phase two that are across the street from us on the east side. At the end of it, I mean, those would be serviced and still would keep the number for one access for 50. And then any additional homes that would be needed to finish out phase two, which now are being called as part of phase three at Ingrid. If we were able to convince a developer to have less than 50 for existing Edna Hill and phase two and whatever portion of post phase three, do not exceed 50. We would have the compliance with one access and a future access off of the way you come. Then the 300 access that's proposed and the cul-de-sac that goes out from phase three as it's proposed and I said for 300 out of phase four. There'd be two subdivisions, each of which would be then reduced by two accesses. Initially by one and would be below the 10 units in each of the two subdivisions, but allow for the expansion to the west of both of those subdivisions. Would allow for traffic circulation and would not have school traffic going through by that time. 300 will be widened, which seems like a much better circulation. And reasonable with me.
Right, she's just going to have to discuss that an alternative thing before building. And so she can hold on that to the developer to see if that was something that he would be able to accomplish. He's easily able to find. Yeah, I can say that existing cul-de-sac is going to 9921. I don't know if TechStar will allow the developer to have that access in the future. If the TechStar continues to change the rules as far as how the distances between driveway accesses. Yes, there is many different driveway there, but there's no development there. So that could change and it may be that it has to be a cul-de-sac. They can't have that access during the 21 on that side next to the sheriff's office. But there still would be two accesses and a potential connection, but it wouldn't be direct legal ground like what we're saying there. There's things upfront, but you know, it could have two accesses, but there's still would not be, could not possibly by TechStar. They will not have that additional access on me. Right. So we'll continue to work with developers and sessions with Jessica as they're presented. And we'll see how we can proceed on the overall concept plan for anything.
I'm back. Yeah, I have my head home. And so you're telling me that the second, I'm like that was flatting and throwing my original head in a subdivision, fucking one, is over there. Well, it may not be anything. So the original flat that was approved and recorded with the county clerk's office, he's only for phase one. That continued through for the subdivision was never recorded in town. It was only a coordinated plan, basically. The additional entrance.
Correct. Whoever has, whoever's going to develop that property and gives the approval for the driver permit to TechStar, they could require something there. They said having a lot, they said having access.
So it's long, great long, and landlocked and that's up and landlocked. They have it a lot. But we don't want enough to come in.
Hi, this is Amy Clark and I'm on Edna. And I just, if I'm standing here, I'm saying, before y'all do, for the residents, for moving to the region on the community, you know, it's going on. You're not finding out why you're, who's asking?
Correct. And we will, by say while we are on the plan, you know, there's four and two to the property. Sounds perfect. Any property that's around the property, it shouldn't be planted, but only the private area around that property. So that's why not every resident in the subdivision gets a, or do have a, but we can make sure that we notify y'all all regardless of what it means to us for the people that we're right.
Okay, initially we weren't included because of our activity with the flat homes, right? But when we're talking about how nobody's gonna be included because they're going along that. And we're. Why? Because it's no more of a, once they go, they.
I understand your frustration and I understand your concern and that's why we will, we will do our part to make sure y'all are the. I'm just telling you from the state law and the requirement that you follow me, we're doing everything that we are supposed to do.
I understand that laws change all the time. And we can make that, we can, you know, people, do that. Maybe by by doing that kind of thing. So I know, I know right now and I understand that I think it would be so much better for us if we accepted, you know, if we really do want it to work, we really do. I didn't expect it for, thank y'all.
Tony, I met with Joe Ripley for about thirty-five minutes. And I informed him because he he's having the same vision we quite good on that that phase two. And we spoke and I provided all the documentation. And he said that he appreciated me doing that. I said, it's up to y'all to meet with the developer. We cannot stop the government that hold the requirements. And he didn't know that, but it had been explained. And then when he went and talked, their government said, I mean, fifty of you are. So it's like in the districts, y'all need to keep talking with the developer. You come up with a plan because they come in here with the planning area to plan, same thing. We, it's not required that y'all be notified. But it would be in the agenda items that are posted. But once it gets past that and it goes to approval, as far as said, state laws as we do, stop the lawsuits. Well, I understand you know. You used to be, that's not good enough for Paul. And I think everyone of y'all is a great, he knew he was nobody needed to do this. That's why, so like, you know, the state law, our state law, you know, fifty-five, I think the only thing you might lose is, uh, the proposed standard. But that's only as needed from Paul. It's not like that, we say it's two orders. The home's trying to give it away. So we just all worked together, we made everybody know, um, a tweet or a post of everybody we have to do this. Get to it. Um, of course, one of the things that we did talk about was most noted a blast date of two hundred. Similarly, what's at end of race. That is possibly one of the things that they were intending to talk to me. And I asked him to let me know when, you know, to talk to you, so I could also be in that. So I can inform the director. We, we understand, I understand the building. I've been telling that city, I've been there in old city, that the city needs help. Big businesses, the people, the places to employ is a little. And I'm sorry, most blind boys that found a grind, want to be busy enough. Just the businesses that were supposed to become a name, you wouldn't need. I, I've been pushing city to do this. And if I am doing it, but to. Russell, please, I understand you guys have regulations here. Believe me, I know it. Did he? All that. So I understand, but you know, I was, you know, the thing that we were talking about, one of the things was. And we would discuss with you guys if my evidence that we possibly. You're talking about possible motor. That, that's it, all. Well, we don't want to do that because custom bands contain. It also mentioned words about possibly, if these new homes have an H O W. We don't want. Right here. Very big, very thorough. We have somebody to tell me what's happening. But. Those are the things that. I would like to inform. If they do have it without me, then all. So far, there is zero. Or an opening. All of them. And we need to work with them. Part of the city, if I did. And all that. You know. You. All the, all the.
I'm not sure where the disconnect came from, where the city was shutting this down or go to end of hill. Because that is certainly not ever the case. Again, like the very preliminary thing that was on the agenda last month was they had met all the requirements by the state. And again, I was too, that was true. I I can think, I can speak on every person's opinion up here, the city would never intentionally hide anything from anybody on any section. And so for someone to cheat us and sneaking is not fair to us because we are in that region experience. And so again, this is the issue that you guys work for, that the hell of a hard. And if it needs everything, then we're sworn to support. And our hope is that you guys and developer can come to an amicable agreement on how to proceed with this. And that everybody will then be happy and safe when everybody's there.
We're hoping that goes. Again. Counsel, I feel all we went here in time on phase two approved. Phase two was coming through. Everybody was told on the front record that we do not want. And that's it. And then all of a sudden, three, four blocks up in the center. Now, and I said, hey, don't get that one, that's already the part. That's why we just, maybe we want to. Um, the preliminary plot, which is a raised amount of these guys. Again, I know you're following state law. I think, you know that, that's it. No, I'm not taking. I know that. I've been, oh my, I didn't know. But. That's why they feel some, like. It wasn't, it wasn't intentional by anybody. This was the developer. But again. That's where the developer. When he first bought the stuff, candy, basket, what was it? For the. Code. But to be fair, they're just still trying to do code. It involves some land blocks. Oh, from the city. That's what we. And after all the stumbling blocks, that's phase two. We don't know how to do it until we're in the city. That's perfect. Again, I know. Your man, they'll be drawing proof in the fourth, he got it on the way up. Because nobody's here at the top. I'm telling. I mean, this is the. Lack of business communication. Happening. These guys don't have to, but it's. Oh, well, I haven't. The part of the city. We sound. We all want.
The people who own the property have a right to do what they want to do. Right? If the people who own the property have that right, the developer, developer, yes, sir.
Okay, next I want to introduce the modern presentation and discussion on maybe the dollar payment. If I was informed a little bit ago, they're going to postpone this to the next workshop session. To discuss a little more on that. Okay, next. Okay, number four, this is the presentation on the new city subdivision ordinance and infrastructure design standards specification guideline. So I'll bring the presentation, I'm just gonna pre-warn everyone, this is not related to the zone ordinance. This is just subdivision ordinance, it's different from zoning, but if there are changes in the amendment that you expect, where it's gonna be adopted with the zoning board. So currently chapter ten of the city code of ordinances has a snippet A, which is the subdivision regulations, and snippet B, ten B, which is the emergency design analyzing section. That's the thing. So the general provisions, the existing code outlines. So the general provisions, the existing code outlines the ability to regulate subdivision based on local and state laws. Defines terms, jurisdictions, eligibility for subdivision activities, for the city following the TJ. And it enforces the public health, safety, and welfare of its elements. In the proposed code, we are aligning everything in line with the mission follow-up comprehensive plan that was adopted in two by the city council. And along with the new proposed zoning ordinance that is going to be adopted in principle. Um, it also extends when they put the ability to include more detail. Other TJ regulations, so currently there is not really any TJ regulations in the existing code. And so this will include some regulations as part of the TJ goes. Um, if the city and the county work together in a local agreement, for the city to actually enforce the TJ. Flat requirements. Um, the existing code, so there was issues of compliance to state law, um, from the chapter two twelve of the local government code. So in twenty twenty-three, the state adopted some changes on the actual planning process. And what requires those decisions, what requires the staff approval. Um, and so we are meeting those things in line, so there is ETJ regulations, um, incomplete planning process, public notice requirements, and lack of enforcement standards. And then in the proposed code, we're making sure that the application filing and deadline process is in place according to state law. And then also, um, there is a lack of discretion when the flat approval, so as you heard from prior meetings, when we then had the subdivision involved. The council tabled those items, technically they should have just approved it, because by state law, it says that the, uh, items are gonna be additionally approved within thirty days after filing. So the, the reason that we need to update the subdivision code is to make sure that everybody is aware of the process. And that there is not a lack of discretion from the council when it flagged presented to them. The part where the discretion is going to be in place is with the zoning, and so if the zoning is adopted and put forward, then there would be requirements in place for rezoning of divisions. Conditionally, I don't have the picture, it's the nature of the current notifications. So that's what the notification and the discretion from the public's opinion and public's input is actually going to be highly valuable for the council to make the decisions going forward. Because it'll actually allow you to have a say in what comes in and what doesn't. Without zoning and without some of these other amendments that we need to make to our codes, there's a lack of ability for us to allow public input and discretion to determine what the outcome is. So the existing code of the planning process, um, requires preliminary final plats for subdivisions. The pilot bill process includes submission to staff review and then to the community that commission wishes currently serving as the council. And then the public areas require four stages of the class, our preliminary flats, final flats, two flats for certain ones, and then flat locations are ready to. So, um, the existing code, we don't have, um, all of the items that are outlined, these are what we have to notify. Um. Like I said, there's not any discretion on the council side to make a determination based on public input, so we're trying to leave those items into the zoning ordinance. So that way you have the upfront opinion to present to the council at the time of the rezon request. Before it gets put before the council for the platform review. In the proposed code, we're saying that the pre-application conference is gonna do requirements, so we're trying to mitigate some of these items on the front end from staff side. And then, um, we'll also have certification exhibits, so once the proposed development goes through on rezoning process, this rezoning. If it's approved, then they would submit certifications and exhibits, which is where they provide their construction and engineering and for staff for government engineers. And then once that's all approved, and then, um, presented to, um, the city administration. And then once that's approved, then it would go forward for the group, the final approval process for the actual platform. So what we're talking about is basically, um, the whole process before the actual platform process, because of where the state law is requiring the, the process to be made in place as far as the one pitch. Um, so when we look at types of flats and claims, um, what we're saying for the approval authority would be that national preliminary plans would go to the city council for approval. Um, preliminary flats would also go to the city council for approval, but then after that, the rest would be staff approval, because that there's really no discretion. And state law down grants that city council can inform the staff to make the determination on the flats that are not preliminary or big flat. So, um, it'll, it'll allow the process to go in place and follow the timing that's required by the state, but then it'll also keep others on the same, um, process. And. The procedure is not important to the general. The, um, existing design standards establishes general requirements for street sidewalk string utility and including provisions for the lot layout, grids, and the block design. The proposed is going to update the interactive design guidelines to current engineering standards for street utilities and ensure adopting those higher standards. Um, updating the surface specs, so having actual specs outlined can be ordered, so right now. We don't have any sets, um, we don't have preliminary sets that we are reading. Um, but we are trying to make sure that all of those are standardized, so that way we help, um, make it easier for developers when they come in with a proposal. And then sidewalks and some of the entrances on pedestrian connectivity accessibility, and then parking dedicated requirements, making sure that we are providing our preparation space, um, for all the subdivision groups. Public infrastructure limits, so the existing code outlines the developers must find and ensure all necessary technical improvements. That's in the current issue, um, and then inspection and acceptance of improvements by the studio required prior to the final approval. And basically, once the final plaque has been presented to the number, the improvement should be instructed in the final plaque won't be reported until after the. The files, uh, after the subdivision improvements are actually pre-installed and then approved by the city. And then the maintenance and warranty responsibility is assigned to developers for the final period. So in the proposed code, we are making sure that, um, what we are trying to mean, like, required to be is being followed through capability. Um, the current is, it is, it's already not made into what it should say. So making sure that, like I said, the flag is recorded and the entries are, um. First priority, the plaque being recorded at the time of the first notice. And then the clear maintenance responsibility, so having one building somewhere in place for at least something one year, and that building is gonna be possibly included in the document. And then improve this by the process, so having as it ends it's fine, but it's certainly acceptable. Enforcement and compliance, um, the existing codes or violations subject to penalty, particularly due action, and then you'll be committed to issue the properties and dollars properly if they're trapped. That's what the existing code, uh, outlines. What we're going to propose in the ordinance amendment would be clear rules to resolve conflicts between local, state, and federal convictions against fines per, and remedies for non-compliance. And the explicit requirements to ensure that our functionality may be inspected more by the. Public area notice requirements, so the existing code, like I said, mainly have the notice requirements for owners, not five, five, three, five, and five location. And then public. Notice has to be posted fifty days prior to the meeting, and then a written notice must be used, you know, ten days prior to the, to property and this, it's in. Um, like I said, that is changing if the zoning needs to be drafted, so this, this ordinance has been proposed to align with what it'd be the place of zone. And so they will go in technically to tackle probably. So the proposed code is going to require progress for master planning limits and development agreements, certain limited flats and re-plates, flat locations. Waivers and exceptions to design standards and significant limits to subdivision plan. Notice timelines, um, and these are any kind of standards, so quoting all the things, um, like I said, the, uh. Final plaque will be something that would probably be approved, and so therefore it would require a nature. Because it is part of the zoning. Yeah, this is also the proposed, this presentation will be posted on the website to you really be that. Uh, along with all of the different units. Um, benefits of the proposed team, so this provides some things to per-process and enable us to use the training and so many processes. Efficiency stream line, planning timeline, and application areas, um, purchasing lines, early apartment dedication, many improvements. Aligning to the subdivision, creating a visual call for the. Plan and the zoning ordinance option. Develop guidance, modern standards and processes, reduce entry and compliance, and require a tactic, type analysis, and other best practices. And then intuitive standards, making sure those are aligned to our, uh, standards and design specifications with other engineers, designers, and processes for it. So this is me, um, I think, out, um, how we're going to go through this process. State law does not require that we use any type of public condition when it comes to subdivision ordinance amendments or administrative design guidelines. All we have to do is go through the public experience, got the one to create, so we're going one step further. To make sure that you are all aware of the changes that are happening, because it does affect you. And we're making sure that we're doing public feedback now, because it does follow in line with the zoning. So whatever is happening on the zoning side and the changes that we're working on maybe in the prior period, maybe that. Also, there's updated, there've been sort of different ordinance to make sure that everything is consistent and made it all works together. So after this public feedback session, um, then you will have city staff review and then the ordinance, and then we're going for visual review. And then after that, then at the same time, hopefully with the subdivision, the zoning ordinance amendments, um, for the zone. Document, they will provide the amendments to the different ordinance to make a purchase. If there is time, please schedule meeting with me if you would like to talk or learn more about it. I'm happy to meet with anybody, I'm happy to hear if there's a concern, hear what you have to say, um, and see how we can, there's accommodation for the ordinance. Um, or in, in formula, where it's likely to involve all the natural aspects. Um, I guess I, the other, there's a lot to all of this, it is not just the, you know, three D process that we just go through. Um, so it, it's better if you come and talk to me ahead of time, we're just waiting for the next council meeting, because we may be moving along a lot with the public zoning ordinance unit. So, um, appreciate you all listening to me, I'm trying to do a lot for everybody, but I wanted to make sure that everybody's understanding of, we are trying to work with everyone, we're trying to make sure the residents are. Fully aware and that you're being transparent as possible about all of the process, but then all the changes and procedures that we're working on, to make sure that you're ready to manage the projects coming in. Okay. That's all I have on my research.
Thank you, Doris, if I may, we could hit on completion.
Thank you, Adam. Is, uh, discussion on zoning, I don't really know if we're able to agree on the topic. I do not need it with me on, so we're not telling.
I think, uh, Doris in her team would be the first. Uh, what is, we need out there first, we need, of course, uh, needs, those are our issues, so we start there. If you have any a wish, would be, um. I would like to see covering over the playground. I would like to see an extension of the flash there.